...High School. The implication of the provision of education and Miss Landman will be questioned.
About this God has always been to them praise, honor, and glory. I'm thankful for our presence in this place tonight. Now give us spiritual insight, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We teach about people who inside become transactive, positive, like the parish school board. We love you and we honor you. We teach what for them is great. Amen.
Amen.
My good God.
Here.
Nancy Reddick. Anthony Zander.
Here.
Josh Lang. Fran Byatt. Paul Martin.
Here.
Paul Martin.
Here.
Joshua White.
Here.
Wade White.
Here.
Mr. President, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item one point oh four approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I hope that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion off by Mr. Hertz, second by Miss Landman. Question. Any opposed? And the motion passed, you understand. Item one point oh five, add off and standing committee reports. Construction committee, if not, Miss, uh...
Minutes of the meeting in the Land and Construction Committee of the Black and Parish School Board held on September twenty seventh, two thousand thirteen, at the Black and Parish Learning Center. Members President Chuck Swallow, Chairman Carl LaFrance, Paul Dair, and after seven others, President Ronald White, Eric Phillips, Sharon Salupa, David John, and Tatum. Stephanie Calamari, Virgins Rome Architects, and Chris Parker, Alitala of ATOV Services. Meeting was called over at two oh eight P M. First item of the agenda was discussion of the problem with the HVAC system inside Black and Housing Facility. Chris Parker, ATOV, presented everyone with a schedule listing the deficiencies for each department. David John, manager of the facility, presented with a list of recommendations by D V Services to fix the deficiencies. Chris Parker stated that Woodward, the contractor on the project, project was presented with the list of deficiencies earlier today, and he recommended that Woodward be given three to four weeks to correct the deficiencies. As a discussion, it agreed by the committee that Woodward would be given four weeks to fix the problem with the HVAC system, and the follow up report would be given next construction committee meeting before P P S B takes action any further action against Woodward. Recently, American Sprinter, the firm hired by P P S B to conduct fire suppression inspections at our facilities, found a number of deficiencies which Chris Parker stated were not required by code, but that they were beyond the norm of P P S B adopting the recommendations and making recommendations, recommended upgrades. After discussion, the committee recommended that P P S B pay to make the upgrades listed by American Sprinter. Next, the food service and maintenance facility currently under design and to be built for software was discussed by Chris Parker and Stephanie Calamari. That project is a FEMA ultimate project, meaning it is not an at cost project, but rather has a specific amount of funds dedicated to it, approximately three point four million. The original design, which is about ninety-five percent complete cost for a five thousand square foot facility, however, because of higher than expected construction costs in southern end of the parish, is feared that an actual cost will be approximately three dollars on the budget. A scaled down version of forty-one hundred square feet was discussed, and this option will probably still be a little bit larger. A third option, thirty-three hundred square feet, was considered unworkable because of that size of the building and its all this functionality. Jim Toddland stated that he is in the process of trying to obtain additional FEMA funding because of the higher than expected construction costs which have occurred in the southern end of the parish. However, it will probably be many months before FEMA makes a decision on the request and is uncertain whether they will allocate any additional funds to the project. After discussion, the committee recommended P P S B proceed with the original design concept of five thousand square feet without any, with any amount not funded by FEMA to be paid out of P P S B's general fund. Next, Chris Parker discussed two change order requests. The first was for approximately two hundred thousand dollar credit to the contractor for Bell Chase Primary Three K One Facility as relates to the sole conditions at the site, which resulted in a savings because of a less than expected pile length requirement. This was discussed at the previous construction committee meeting, but the amount was unknown at that time. After discussion, the committee recommended approving the change order for the credit. The second change order is for additional days and the associated cost for the forced off of housing facility. Contract was delayed because of prohibited Mississippi River heights and because the underground telephone and utility lines, which were not known when construction began, despite various maps and diligent attempts to locate all the lines. It is unclear who, if anybody, is at fault for the delays since the parties were using old maps and the parish government had owned the property at one time when some of the underground lines may have been late. After discussion, the committee recommended the change order be approved, the approximate amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars is expected of being the will we reverse due to these costs. Chris Parker then discussed the remaining projects, section of the blue Charazza floors of South Black and Parish High School replaced over Thanksgiving and Christmas breaks. The poor quality of different sections of the flooring of the school or the area of epoxy flooring was discussed. No resolution was properly decided on whether the problems have been repaired or whether P P S B should attempt to obtain a credit from the contractor. Chris Parker recommended to the committee that a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, be entered into the contractor South Black and Parish title similar to the one entered into the contractor Phoenix High School, to relieve the contractor of some of the potential equated damages in order to facilitate their cash flow. After discussion, the committee recommended the board approving, approve having Superintendent Russell and Ronald White work with Chris Parker in turn, the end line to formulate the MOU with the contractor along the same lines as the MOU with the contractor for Phoenix High School. Chris and the other further, Chris and the others further discussed South Black and Parish Elementary School, Phoenix High School, South Black and Parish High School C D B B G projects, as well as the roof's replacement at the Black and Parish Learning Center being performed under warranty. If there can go further, the meeting was adjourned at four oh eight P M.
Thank you, Mr. Swallow. The executive committee meeting was called over at four oh five P M on September twenty fourth, two thousand thirteen. Members in attendance were Anthony St. Philip, Chair Nancy Lahey, Fran, Bobby Martinez, and Dennis Resell. Others who were in attendance were Monica Wordsprall, Bateman. School nurses Rebecca Anderson, Michelle Hewitt. Review of the board policy J G C D adopted July ninth, two thousand thirteen. The nurses went over the ramifications of having suggested provisions under number eight, acceptable school medications. H, using amphetamine to check the student believed to be to be having an anaphylactic reaction, whether or not the student has a prescription. The nurses requested that this provision, H, be removed from the policy. It is not mandatory by law. The following revised and new board policy were discussed. B B B C, board members continuing education. D F D, tax and bond election and sales. E B B C, emergency crisis management. E B C, building and ground security. It's one called. E E, child nutrition program management. G B M, dismissed old employees. I D D F, education of students with exceptionalities. I D E, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. I D F A, Guinness Colastic Athletics. I K D C, private school. J C V A F, bullying, hazing, and terrorizing. And J G C, student health services. New policy G A M J, miscellaneous conditions of employment. The committee will recommend to the board to adopt new policy G A M J and the revised policies above, with the exception of E B C. Policies E E and I D D F have been edited to add our versions. The German was at five forty-eight P M. Next, does anybody have any other that I could stand with any comments? Item two, Black and Parish Recognition Handle Presentation. Item two point oh one, treat presentation Debbie Ferbo, Earth Keepers Program Director.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for letting me come again to see you and, and thank you for dinner tonight. That was fantastic, really great. I wanted to share a little wonderful thing with, about your students from last year for a few minutes. One thing that has continued to happen and really showed itself this past year is that because we've been fortunate enough to have your students from Black and Parish coming for several years at a row now, and their siblings have come and stuff, the excitement is contagious. And so when they show up the first day, they're just thrilled to be there, and they just can't get enough of the look, enough of the learning and the excitement. And I wanted to share some things with you, if I could figure out the board this time. Two little girls that are very curious about something that they discovered together. Now, these little girls, oddly enough, both did not like bugs when they first showed up, but right now they've got a little cup full of bugs, and they're discovering what's going on in there. Just having a nice little nature walk together. As you can see, when we're teaching in the outdoor classroom, everybody sits on the ground, which is, can be a feat in itself, but once it begins, it, everybody likes doing it, and it's fabulous thing. We teach four basic energy, uh, basic science concepts, uh, energy flow, which causes photosynthesis. They become a munchline and they discover together by learning together. Here, a dad and his son and his best friend are doing some critical thinking skills on, sitting on the dirt. Um, here they're discovering recycling of building materials, which you know is a very prominent and important thing about the use of air, water, and soil, and how it needs to be protected, and then it's powered by the sun. These kids, of course, are discovering that everything is breathing, even plants. Interrelationships of things in this particular science concept, we teach them that you, of course, everything is dependent on everything else. Here they are tied up together in the web of life. All your kids have these ropes on themselves, and they're tied together and dependent on each other because they all become something. Each one of these boys is wearing a card that says he's a plant or an animal or an animal that eats animals, and they connect together. And then through a process, they disconnect because one has been poisoned and the other one has made the other one sick, discovering, of course, that when you do think you do one thing, you're really doing more than one thing. This is the concept of change over time relative to energy and materials. They get to dig up time capsules. We talk about, um, geological change. They dig up time capsules and go through all of the changes together, and then they create a change of their own. Now, in your folders, I included this time some written things that your kids had done. And this poem right here, wonderfully enough, actually reflects every one of those science concepts. Some of it is language that we used, some of it is discovery that she made, but everything is relative to something that happened during the photosynthesis lesson, or something that happened during the change lesson, or something that happened during the cycle lesson, or something that happened during the interrelationship lesson. She wrote this at school, after the fact, many months after the fact, and there are several things in there that were given to me by your teachers that are now incorporating it into their regular class lessons for writing things and things of that nature. So I just, I'm so proud of her for writing this and also very pleased that it sticks the way it does, that the retention is there. Some kids just kind of discovering things. This is one of the places where they really showed things that stuck with them, and that's why I wanted you to have the written pieces so you'd be able to write, see them themselves. They're expected to use less energy and materials, and they're expected to stay in touch with the natural world, and they make their own personal choices, and they share it with their families. So you'll see in your packets, of course, these are letters about what they've been doing, and this little boy is what he calls himself, Virg, I believe. Was that his nature name to each other? Same thing about reducing, reusing, recycling, and making, making effort to change habits in, in this neighborhood, which means he's changing his community. Very powerful thing for a fourth grader. On site, we do recycling, we're using, we're using every single day, and a lot of the kids and teachers that I get to work with in your community adopt this either in their individual classrooms or at their schools. This is, of course, is a magic spot where, you know, everybody gets to just hang out and relax in the woods. And here's a little girl laying on the dirt, which is a pretty big statement, and we couldn't even get him to sit down first. This is a fundraising project that one of your teachers did with the kids, where they did an art project. As you can see, they painted boots, and then they, um, canvassed their community and took donations and donated it to an environmental organization in their community. I think they gave some to Woodlands Park and one other place. The next few things you're gonna see are what teachers have taken, used our program to create things that will remind kids about the keepers, but also qualify for grading papers. This was a big writing project that was done. This piece right here, of course, is a narrative about being a snake and things like that that she wrote on recycled paper. This is called an acrostic poem, where they use, as you can see, magic spots all the way down, and she then wrote a poem about a cross. This is the water cycle written on a recycled, um, manila folder, I believe. And this is a lovely little story about electricity, saving electricity. This is a math, uh, teacher from South Black and Parish turned this map right here, which is the map that we deliver to the schools ahead of time, into a math, um, lesson for the kids. And they took that map and discovered angles and polygons with it. Kids leaving their last day of earth keepers, and of course, happy hunger for training manual. So I just want to spend a few minutes just talking to, I want to tell you, of course, thank you so much. Um, we're starting a new year, and of course, you know, with the government shutdown, there's a little bit of challenge. Right now, we don't have programs, but we have, we are spending some time researching alternate places to go, and we feel fairly confident that things are gonna be okay. As far as funding for this community, it's as strong as it ever was. South Black and Parish is being funded by Kinder Morgan and Daybrook, um, Phoenix, by United Bulk and Stolt Haven, and they've been really strong in doing that year after year after year. We've got a promissory from Phillips sixty-six, which will come in at the beginning of the year. Um, of course, the schools are participating in some way, and so things are looking really good, and I'm hoping, and I hope this number is right, that all said and done, we'll do, we'll have about three hundred and twenty-five students and probably another fifty, sixty adults, parents, teachers, and chaperones coming this year. So we're looking forward to a great year. Thank you all very, very much. We really couldn't do it without your support, believe me. It is unbelievable how supportive you are, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you. I tell you what, I was looking through some of those forms, and it's, uh, they can write better than me. Physically print better than me.
I didn't ask if you had any questions, but I know I've been doing this for so long.
I don't think they have any questions. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll do have one question. Do you just need the bus service?
No, he guys are actually just maybe, but he got stopped as well.
Right, but I mean, you just need bus service.
And because it's been increasing in enrollment, she really doesn't want people to hold up. So, you know, her, her, and back, and you took that, and forthright, though she'll require her to actually increase the buy session.
Thank you. Item two point oh two, summer leadership training, award of Black and Parish School Board's awards status. Kelly DiMarco is to be deferred, yes. Item two point oh three, recognition of Miss Mandy Boez, Bell Chase Middle School Teacher, A P I Award is called.
Good evening. I have the great privilege of introducing Mandy Boez, but before I do that, I do want to tell you that she is this year's recipient of the American Petroleum Industry Delta Chapter Chairman's Award. Um, here tonight to present the award are two distinguished guests. We have Jean May Brett from the Department of Education, and Ms. Brett serves as the Math and Science Partnership Director and the Network Five Coach. She does a lot of work with us. Additionally, we have Peggy Boujwa. Peggy Boujwa has served on the Board of Directors for the New Orleans Chapter of the American Petroleum Institution for the past seven years. She is the Association's immediate past chairman and continues to serve as Chair of Scholarship Program and serves on the Education Committee. So I'd like to present these two ladies, who will then present the award to Miss Boez.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the introduction. As she mentioned, I am a A P I Delta Chapter of American Petroleum Institute. Uh, we have for over twenty-five years offered many scholarships, um, programs for early education and specifically for what we call Teacher of the Year Awards. The, um, the scholarship, uh, who will, let me tell you, for the scholarship, we gave over twenty thousand dollars this year to high school students, juniors and seniors going into college, as well as college students. And one of our recipients was a student right here at Bell Chase High School. We're pleased to let you know she's at LSU, pursuing a degree in engineering. She was an outstanding student, so your job has been well done. A little bit about the Outstanding Educator Award. It's a selection criteria that includes a commitment to teaching, resourcefulness, professional involvement, and community service. The outstanding teacher, teacher model is one whose performance will positively impact the student, not only in the classroom today, but for their life, uh, throughout their whole lives. It is no surprise to anyone who knows Mandy or who works with Mandy that she was selected for this award. Her resume is quite outstanding, and her levels of recommendation were phenomenal. It gave us a clear vision of who she is, not only here on, on her school life, but on her daily life as well. It is our honor to give her this recognition. I won't read her entire resume, because I know you don't want to get home tonight, but I would like to acknowledge some of the highlights. She was, Mandy was selected to represent her school as Louisiana Teacher Leader, where she will work on transitioning her colleagues to common core state standards. Additionally, her continued professional development includes some twenty-two different programs and seminars that supports best practices and teaching and learning. It lists, includes subjects such as literacy design workshop, comprehensive curriculum and planning workshop, discipline of dignity for difficult students, and positive behavior support seminars. On behalf of A P I, I would like to also recognize the work that you're doing here in your schools. It is the school board and the administrators of this parish that, that afford her the opportunity to make the goals and the strides that she's doing, and it is our honor to recognize Mandy tonight, if she's here.
Congratulations to Mandy. Thank you for all the support.
Item three, board members time for non-agenda and agenda items. Um, as President, the board I wanted to congratulate Mandy again for such a, a good job, Mandy. She got the good work, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future. Also, uh, a great thank you to the, to the staff, and for such a fine feast they've gone on for us tonight. Really spoiled, yeah, the board. Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Uh, we finally have a little chill in the air, things are feeling a little better. Saints one, Tulane one, LSU one, come on, can't get any better. But, uh, wanted to thank everybody, and, uh, I'm... Bell Chase one.
Bobbing up.
Sorry about that. But anyway, uh, I'll ask anybody else if they have anything else to say. Anything else they have?
Yes, Mr. St. Philip. Uh, I got a phone call this past week concerning the speed limit in front of South Black High School in Saguaro. I contacted Superintendent, uh, he had been working with the state. The Saguaro, I think, is for fifty miles an hour, fifty, fifty-five? Fifty. And, um, that's what the parent told me. She thinks it was too high for that area, so did contact the superintendent again to follow up with the state, and, uh, do we have any movement on that, or are they...
An hour twenty-four, it's gonna be fifty miles an hour at this time.
So if anybody's concerned about that, contact the state representatives, and maybe they can help us out with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, uh, three point oh one, executive search session pursuant to revised statute forty-two, code six point one eight, two litigation. U S D C E B L A, number twelve, dash twenty-four, six to nine.
I'll represent.
I'll say it. Motion off by Mr. LaFrance, second by Mr. Hertz. Any, any objection? Any opposed? And the motion passed, you understand.
Okay.
Now, any opposed? Uh, can we have a roll call vote? Nancy Reddick.
Yes.
Anthony Zander. Yes. Josh Lang. Fran Martin. Paul Martin. Paul Martin. Joshua White. Wade White. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item, uh, item three one oh three, discussions appropriate action regarding approval of resolution to amend accountability bonus point calculations for non-proficient super subgroups. Miss Landman.
This is also a resolution requested, um, um, to support L S B H request, um, and has been approved of superintendent. It's a resolution to amend accountability bonus points for non-proficient super subgroup. Whereas Louisiana schools, school districts, and school boards are accountable for the academic growth of all students and receive school performance point credit for demonstrating significant growth among lowest performing students, and whereas elementary and middle schools can earn up to a maximum of ten performance points for students identified as non-proficient on state English, language, arts, or math exam, and who in turn exceed growth expectations, and whereas high schools can earn up to ten performance points for students who identify as non-proficient on state English, language, arts, or math exam, and who exceed growth expectations on A C T tests, and whereas the state of Louisiana has designed that in order for schools to receive bonus points credited to school performance, a subgroup of students identified as non-proficient on state English, language, arts, or math exams must consist of a minimum of ten students. And whereas the non-proficient super subgroup is provided with intensive targeted remediation additional after-school programs and ongoing progress monitoring reformative assessment data, and whereas a calculation of bonus points does not include members of the super subgroup who reach the goal of proficiency, but instead focuses on students who grew up still, who grow, but still remain non-proficient, and whereas the current accountability policy discounts the accelerated achievement of individual students in the super subgroup who have worked diligently to attain proficiency by rewarding equal accountability points to students who remain proficient, and whereas the Black and Parish School Board considers the achievement of each student as an integral component to the collective success of the district, but also recognizes the considerable effort necessary to reach proficiency on the super subgroup. Now let it therefore be resolved that the Black and Parish School Board request that Louisiana accountability bonus point program include genuine recognition of celebration of the achievement of each and every non-proficient student on the original super subgroup who exceed growth expectations.
Thank you again yesterday. Good job with this one. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Second, second. She's off.
I'm off.
Any question? Any... Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Item 3.04, discussion of appropriate action in regard to approval of new and revised school board policies. I'll offer these policies. Second. Okay. Are these board policies?
Yes.
Okay. We can also add that to our motion that will wait for second reading. So who's going to catch this? That motion offered by myself, Anthony St. Philip, seconded by Mr. LeBron. Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Item four, Superintendent comments and reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Discussion appropriate action in regard to adopt Louisiana lines of questionnaire for year ended June 30, 2013, Mr. White.
Good evening. Each year, I'm often for discussion.
Second. Got a motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Mr. Swallow.
Thank you. Each year, we're required to complete this questionnaire, have approved by the board sign, and give it to our auditors. It's included in the board package, so I'd ask that it be approved by the board.
Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.02, defer. 4.03, discussion progress in regard to approval of low-bid of the purchase of e-readers for school libraries, Mr. Swallow. Motion offered by Mr. Lankin, seconded by Ms. Slavetti.
We originally decided that we wanted to purchase some e-readers for some of our school libraries. And these devices are not on state contract. Because of the number that we wanted to purchase, we were over the $30,000 limit, so we had to actually do a public bidding for these. Our willing bidder was CDWG, which is a bidder that we deal with quite often with a lot of electronics. I think you have the bid sheet that was submitted, the model that we're going to be purchasing is size number one, the Kindle Fire HD tablet, 7-inch, 16-inch height. The bid was $195.77 per device. We're also going to be purchasing the USB AC power adapter, if you go with these. Those are $18.81. We're looking at a different initial purchase of about 200 units. I would like to recommend that we accept CDW as a low bidder and move forward with that purchase.
Any question?
What's the total? The total amount for our initial purchase was about $36,000. That's for 200 units. And the initial, the school that will be putting those in for the second half of this school year will be Bell Chase Middle School, South Park High School, and Phoenix. And I would anticipate that next school year, which gives a chance to test these units, get them in schools, if the libraries used, librarians used to use them, we'll set up policies and check them out, things of that nature. And the next school year, probably open it up for additional purchases from the other libraries. I don't disagree with what you're adding, but this was something we might kind of talk about.
We're going to monitor initial, as that was one of their top priorities of implementing more technology, putting that in students' hands. We need to figure out about the downloading of books on there, so that's why we didn't want to go District Y. We want to see if this device will hold up, and we're going to use those three schools to see if we can get the most to sign.
And if units all compatible with our Destiny full-let show software that we already use in the libraries, and books in purchase can be used District Y. So maybe this is a good, good number to start with for a test, and to be able to have them in schools for the last half of this school year. We also structured this bid where we can purchase for 24 months these prices, so it will become, if this is approved, for our future purchases.
Ms. Lankin, you got a question?
If they check them out.
These will be available for students to check out, yes. Just like...
Yeah, just like tomorrow.
Just like that.
But how could you control whether in their house, what they're downloading? Can you do that?
And we sort of come to a product that allows us to control all the devices, no matter where they're at, no matter where they connect. We can lock them down, we can administrate these things and passwords where we can...
Also, doesn't matter where they are.
We'll be able to control them at the time, too.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons we need to set policies in place and make sure they're working. I mean, District...
Oh, they're great. I think they make a reasonable one, because they like, they like that.
Any other question?
I don't think I want to add, you know, next time we come, like, we should have one so we can see exactly where we purchased them. We actually purchased two for testing, but we gave them away at our PD day at the beginning of this year. I'm sorry.
Paul's taking them off.
Next time, next time we'll bring them.
Any other question? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
4.04, discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of the Greek energy operation committee work for the emergency contract school board amendment from 62,000.
Motion offered by Mr. La Merz, seconded by Mr. Martinez. Any questions? Any opposed?
For the same reason I oppose every year, because of the bus situation, they won't replace it, they'll just give us what they think is worth.
Other than Mr. Merz, any other opposition? And the motion passes.
4.05, discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of a change of Bell Chase Fire Hall to credit line construction plans tomorrow.
So offered.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Mr. Martinez.
This is a changeover which is a credit, and I think it was compared by the construction committee. Maybe you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of a change of what's happening now tomorrow.
Motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Mr. Swallow. Are there any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to construction, food service, maintenance, building, and tour staff tomorrow.
So offered. Second. Motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Mr. Martinez.
There were three options that were discussed in the construction committee, and we just need direction on which option we're prepared to take. We're prepared to take any action that we're ready to take.
The only question that I have to respond is, the 4100 square foot, why, why were we, why is it recommended we do the 5000? I know why the, I know why the 3300 square foot, but is the 4100 square foot too small? What do we have up here? What is the big...
It's pretty, it's pretty tight. The, the building was originally, when we first sat down and started to design it, the food service staff was going to be in there, the maintenance staff was going to base their operations from there, and then special ed has people who are going to be in there. The, with the 4100, it's going to make it really tight for all of those groups. Special ed did say that they would be moving out in the future, but the, but with the 5000, it would be better for the other two to have more indoor storage space. There is storage space under the building, but it's somewhat unprotected, so this would, 5000 would work for now, and then when special ed moves out, that would give both food service and maintenance more indoor storage area, which they desperately need.
Wait, maintenance? I thought maintenance.
It's food service and maintenance, or that's what our direction for the facility is always made.
Okay, yeah, that's true, that's about, yeah. So we kept that same building. But it's actually going to be used for food service.
It's special ed. They'll have maintenance built in, and there'll be a lot of storage which we need.
Okay, so the special ed will be moving out somewhere?
Uh, trails.
The only reason why I'm asking is because an approximate doesn't mean a deficit would be even more of another $1 million out of the general fund. Now, that, that's for the 5000 square foot.
The building, the building that we've designed is, or the verge is run, is designed, is very, very similar to the building that was built for the south transportation facility and very similar to the north transportation facility. So basically, we've built this building twice already.
Oh, yeah. We have done it on the north transportation.
So I think we're pretty well honed in on what the cost is going to be, a lot closer than what we would be with a lot of other types of buildings. So I'm not, I'm not real fearful that the price would be a whole lot different than what we're, what we're looking at with the numbers that we've brought in.
So the difference in the, in the 900 square foot is worth, I guess what I'm asking, it's worth us having to pay the $1 million out of our general fund? I guess that's what I'm asking, because that's what it's going to cost.
Well, it's, and it's more than 900 square feet, because you have to remember...
Well, it's 5000 and...
This is an elevated structure, so it's, it's really as if you were building, when you, when you're building an elevated structure, it's the same as building a two-story building. So it's, it's really more like almost 2000 square foot of additional space that, that the contractors are actually having to build.
And Tyler feels, he feels very, in terms of the cost. He feels really good about getting the money because of the difference in the cost being, it's been those that down southern ends cost him more, so he feels going back to Cleveland, he's confident about getting that money.
Okay, then I misunderstood the minutes, because I, I, in the minutes, I, I got a different feel, was that he did not feel...
No, he does. He feels because of that.
He did not, he could get them to...
He feels that he can get it, it's just, it's most likely going to take a lot longer than we would ever want to wait to get it through.
If, if, I mean, if he thinks they'll prove it, I mean, then it would be a no-brainer.
I don't, I don't know that he thinks that you're going to prove every nickel on it, but he thinks, he's got a high confidence level that he's going to get the lion's share, I believe.
That's, that's what kind of made the vote, besides having, having the building to build like somewhat more, if we just, all the time and effort and size of, the lights involved, and having it built, built, and it's too small, we need, it becomes worthless immediately. That's, it's a lot extra space, which was, I think comparable to what was there before. It's better to get, especially with the general confidence that you can get money for the size of the building.
So, but it's going to be more than just food service, it's going to be...
Correct.
Stories for other people, too.
Right. Multiple usage.
Right, it's, yeah, it's, the 4100 square foot building is, you've got a 4100 square foot building that's over budget a little bit, and then you've got a 5000 square foot building that's...
Over budget a lot.
Over budget more. And then, then the, the option three is not over budget, but the building is...
Right.
Any other question?
Could you tell me the top two?
That's, that's what we're getting.
Yeah, we're right on, we're right on.
We have a motion on the table for option one, and...
Option one. First.
Does the second approve, or is that option one? That's the, the second. Okay, so that's on the table. Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of, regarding approval of revision to job description director, daycare, daycare assistance director. Excuse me.
So offered.
Any questions?
Need a second?
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Mr. LeBron. Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of revision to job description child on a kindergarten supervisor, head start mental health consultant tomorrow.
Motion offered by Mr. Merz. Quick second by Mr. Swallow. Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of community assessment update, you know.
Motion offered by Mr. Swallow, seconded by Mr. Merz. Any questions?
I'm happy to go.
Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Mark the headshot by your report tomorrow. That's an information line, if there's any questions.
I have a question, Ms. Mommy. I'm sorry, board members. With Lou, like, the government's slowed down, it's not shut down, is it, if we care for things by the impact of head start, has there any impact on, on us?
Luckily for us, we're, our program is funded May 31st, June 1st, so all of our money for this year is already in our bucket to spend. If this thing would happen last until next June, it would affect us. Basically, the only effect it has on us is all of the federal and regional offices are head start or shut down, so if we have any questions, we don't have anybody to email or call for guidance. But as long as we don't have any questions or any calamity like a hurricane hitting us or something, our money for this year is there, and hopefully this thing will be resolved, hopefully, and everything will be back on track.
Board, approval of board consent.
Offer, motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Ms. LeBron. Any question? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Item six, information access.
I have something to say to Mr. White. I love your new sales tax charts. Finally, finally, you have made me happy.
I had shown a couple of people, the, this is what I've been asked to do, and then I showed the one that I did, and I said I defy anybody to say I didn't follow proper instructions.
This is wonderful, and that's exactly what I wanted all along. You have done a great job.
Thank you. I'll take it once you gave me some guidance.
Anybody that doesn't understand is very clear, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's all in Excel, so it's very easy. Don't give all your secrets out.
Any other information access?
I have something. I think next week you want to have a finance meeting on the Georgia summer.
Correct, correct. Looking at the next month, I have some other things that you don't think about.
Okay, so?
Health insurance renewal, amended budget for last year, finally amended budget. So next week we find, and definitely purchase supplements, and then anything else I have done by that time that we can discuss.
Would they? Would the finance? Is it? There's? How about there's?
Thursday sounds good.
Can we tell them? You want them to cooperate?
Any time you try, any time you try.
Who else is on the committee? Mr. Mertz.
You want to have an earlier, Thursday, or what? Three?
Three, two-thirds, three? May 3rd?
Three.
Okay. And?
Yeah, please, can you see it?
How about? Next Thursday, at 3:00.
Thanks.
I can finish that. How many?
Oh, yes. Ms. Puyat has given us the proposed meeting rotation calendar for next year, so I want everybody to look at it, take it home, study it, see if it makes sense, if it doesn't make sense.
Call me because I got the notes, my girl came to call me, I was playing with her, I got some of the mail in the month, brother, maybe you can send that to her. Please call me.
And I don't know if any of these dates, September, October, November, December, Monday, October, October, I have to say.
Oh, we're going to change the due?
Of course.
I see something right now.
What's that?
In July, you got Southside Elementary, in November, you got Southside Elementary. Back to that.
Uh, you probably shouldn't.
In November, shouldn't be Southside.
Because I changed, uh, in the round, I'm shooting at Southside.
Which one, Mary Ann?
Uh, November, it's Southside. I had to change the number for Belle Chase, like, to have a day, and do two-thirds. I put Belle Chase in October, and this year, that'll be the month for y'all's. If Belle Chase, uh, uh, you need to.
Any other information I? Okay, item 7, Citizens Comments. That's called.
With regard to the food service maintenance building, gave this instruction to go ahead with option one. According to the rules, I would need to ask you for permission to go out for bid. We said, as part of it, we had said it would be ready to go out for bid in 30 days. Do you want us to come back and ask for that? I assume that that permission was giving us permission to go out for bid as well.
Mr. President?
Mr. LaFrance?
I'd like to suspend the rules. First, we do suspend the rule, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion offered. 1 to 1. Motion offered to suspend the rule by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. Ladd. Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Mr. President?
Mr. LaFrance?
I'd like to make a motion that we add option one to go out for bid on construction of the full service, full service maintenance building.
I have a motion offered by Mr. LaFrance. Understood, later, please.
So, suspend the rule?
Yes, ma'am.
Back to the rule?
Yes. Well, 13 will be, uh, the option one to go out for bid.
Go for 12.
Okay.
And that's the, the part of the permission you want?
So the motion is on the table, any opposed? Any question? And the motion passes unanimously. Dating time for the next location meeting. The next meeting will be held November 4th, 2013, in Southside Elementary, Fortsaw, at 6:00 p.m.
Motion said, John.
Motion offered by Mr. LaFrance. Seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any question? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.